Hey, everyone. Welcome to the regular Monroe Planning Commission meeting of Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It's seven oh one P M. And call this meeting to order. Hannah, would you take role, please?
I'd love to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum, Commissioners Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, Nugent, and Walker.
Thank you. Next item, we look forward to public comments, anyone wishing to speak about topics not related to items on the agenda, we allow three minutes. Anyone? Anyone in the waiting room?
We do have one person in the audience, if you'd like to comment, just use the raise hand feature and I can allow you to speak.
No, thanks. All right. We have minutes from our last in-person meeting on the thirteenth of February. Edits comments.
I motioned to approve the meetings from the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, it says twenty twenty-two, it's probably the only edit.
I second it.
Thanks. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Motion passes. No public hearing, we are on to items in section six, new business, we have item six point one. It's two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan update transportation element with Kate. And you've identified a consultant.
Yes. The Transpo Group is part of our team that I think we introduced you to at the joint meeting and this might be the first overview of them, but tonight's presentation is just an overview of what the transportation element is, what it includes, what we need to look at, so. Thank you, Hannah, the last time we updated this, actually, I'm going to go through the agenda bill just really quickly to tell you what's in there. I included some of the language that is directly out of the Growth Management Act. I also wanted to identify that we have state-owned state routes or transportation infrastructure, which we are somewhat constrained on if development negatively impacts them beyond their adopted level of service. We have to look at things and that's US two state route five twenty-two and state route two oh three, so just making you aware that which you probably already know, there's some interesting challenges with the city Monroe, we also have the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks, which is also another challenge, First Airfield is also protected to some extent by the state, we're supposed to protect general aviation facilities. So I just want to bring that to your attention as well, another component of the transportation element is the financing plan and that's a ten-year plan and a six-year plan, which last year, my understanding is our city engineer Scott Peterson came to you to update the Transportation Improvement Plan, that's something we do every year in addition to the capital facilities plan, so there's some different financing tools we have access to. And then just going through some of the other requirements, which I'll also get into my presentation. The Growth Management Act modified back in two thousand five, really trying to get at multimodal transportation, so we're not just looking at cars and vehicles and they're also encouraging us more and more to get into active transportation, so walking, biking. And then I also provided two links in the in the packet, one is to the existing chapter four in the Comprehensive Plan, which is the transportation element, and then appendix D, which is the actual transportation plan. The one thing I realized is I did not include the Puget Sound Regional Council's regional transportation plan, because again, like I've been kind of training you, the Growth Management Act and then the multi-regional planning, which for us is the Puget Sound Regional Council, Vision twenty fifty is the land use component. The regional transportation plan is the transportation component, so I will provide that before the end of the week in an email to you. And then as we're moving forward, you will be getting a lot more information. And again, this part of the comp plan all has to be adopted by the end of two thousand twenty-four. So getting into the presentation, the plan was last updated in two thousand fifteen, next slide, please. And I've already started going through this, excuse me, but the the facilities that we have in Monroe, again, we actually have a general aviation airport. We have the railroads and that's important for both Amtrak and freight mobility, we have again our non-motorized, the most recent project was the Chain Lake Road multimodal trail that was, I think officially open last fall, November. Roads again are the primary thing that the city of Monroe does focus on and then transit, which for the city of Monroe, our primary provider is community transit based out of Everett, but we also do receive summer service from the Snoqualmie Valley Transit, which is a not-for-profit collaboration of the Snoqualmie Tribe, King County Metro, cities of Snoqualmie, Carnation. There's one other entity in there, unfortunately, because of the pandemic and few other things, we have not received service because they don't have coach operators for about the last year and a half, but they're actively trying to get coach operators and that was providing service between Duval and Monroe. And again, as I already mentioned, the primary concern for the city Monroe is really the road system and that's because based on the information from the last comp plan, about eighty-three percent of all trips made by residents of Monroe are by a single occupant vehicle, so lots of vehicles are being driven. The largest destinations are typically work and school. Now, this one's going to be really interesting, the data that we have in the current plan is from two thousand nine and again, we're still trying to understand how the pandemic has changed work behavior, where you're working, your hours, your commute, but back in two thousand nine, seventy-two percent of the residents who were going to work drove alone, eleven percent were in a carpool, six percent used transit, four percent walked, and then we had five percent at that time working from home, so I'm just so curious what we update this information. And then another thing that's really important for Monroe is there was a court case several years ago about making sure that our infrastructure sidewalks and crosswalks were compliant with the American Disabilities Act, and so every year, the city of Monroe has been doing a certain number of projects to make sure that we're compliant and that we're our sidewalks are compliant with the ADA rules. I mentioned this a little bit more from the railroad perspective, but we also have truck routes right through the city of Monroe. Our routes are US two, SR five twenty-two, SR two oh three, but then we also have two more layers, which is a smaller ton weight and that is one hundred and seventy-ninth, we also have Main Street, North Kelsey, and the Kelsey is only from US two to Chain Lake Road, Woods Creek, and then the lowest category is Frylands Boulevard and Lewis Street between US two and Chain Lake Road, so got all these different categories of transportation in the community. Next slide, please. Okay, so Growth Management Act has several goals and goal number three is specific to transportation. I'll just read it to you, it's encourage efficient multimodal transportation systems that are based on regional priorities and coordinated with county and city comprehensive plans, which our current plan is coordinated and we work with Snohomish County. We have an interlocal agreement with Washdott for US two, SR five twenty-two and two oh three. Next slide, please. And I'm not going to run through all of these, you will get a copy of this presentation, but these are the mandatory elements. And I think it's really key, the very first one is what is your land use assumptions? Because whatever you decide where you're going to put your residents, where you're going to put businesses, those trips have a different impact on your transportation network, be it roads, your multimodal trails, bike paths, and so the very first thing is this transportation plan has to be based on what you're thinking from a land use perspective, so they are fully integrated. Some of the other ones that you've heard me talk about with the capital facilities and utilities plan is we have to have an inventory, we need to know what the current capacity is, we need to know what the forecasting is. And that's not only for roads, but we also need to work with the operators of First Airfield. We also need to work with community transit and the Snoqualmie Valley Transit from a public transit perspective. And so then the other one is, I've already mentioned this before as well, but the state controls the level of service, which is a standard that we have to set for our own roads, but the state says for US two, five twenty-two and two oh three, they get to make that decision and we need to follow it. So, next slide. And and then you're going to hear me say this over and over and over, but we're following that hierarchy, the Growth Management Act. Then our plan also needs to be coordinated with the PSRC, regional planning documents Snohomish County, and then down to our locally adopted plans, we also need to make sure we're coordinating with Snohomish County. Some other things I wanted to point out on this slide is demand management strategies. So the city of Monroe must comply with the Commute Trip Reduction Act, which was passed back in the nineteen nineties and it was really based on, again, single occupant trips for people going from their house to their job. And so it was encouraging people to figure out another way to do that, so you're reducing the amount of air pollution, fuel consumption and traffic, the impacts on the state routes, and so Monroe already has been doing this for decades now. The other thing, and I mentioned this earlier, is that we're also needing to plan for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and again, that's for active transportation. Next slide, please, oh, you're already there, sorry, go back. All right, so I've mentioned this term before, level of service standard. And this is, this is kind of how we determine if our system is working accurately or not or efficiently. And so I'm not going to go through the terms, but the two that I bolded, level C is what the standard is, the city is set for the local road system. Level D, so you're going to have some congestion, it's not free flow, that's what we've established for arterials. That's also what the state is established for US two, SR five twenty-two and two oh three. The interlocal agreement, though, with the with the state says that if you're, if five twenty-two is operating at a level E, so that means you've got congestion, it's not free flow. It can actually stay that way, but if you hit F, if it's existing and you're not changing it, you don't have to do mitigation, but if you hit F, you're going to have to make some kind of concession to try to fix the situation, they don't want that, F is failing, you don't want that, it's good for transit because people want to get on a bus, but it's not good for your general network. And then in the two thousand fifteen plan, consistent with some changes in state law, we actually introduced level of service standards for the non-motorized system, so if you go through, I don't know if you had a chance to go through the plan, but there's actually sections that talk about where they wanted to increase the sidewalk and bike lanes and that helps us get to it's actually, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not one of the maps that I have up there, but anyway. So this is something new for the city and as of two thousand fifteen, we're actually not just looking at a road system, we're looking at other infrastructure, so you've got a more holistic transportation network. Next slide, please. Concurrent C is another term that you're going to hear and the state has defined that, that when you have a development come in, the impacts on water, sewer and transportation need to be the the impacts of that development cannot degrade the existing infrastructure. If it does, the applicant or the proper project manager has to somehow either do a road improvement or they can pay impact fees to do the needed improvement within six years, and that's a term that the state has established. When the recession hit, my understanding, I wasn't in land use at the time, but my understanding is that six years actually got extended a little bit further because of our financial situation in Washington State. One key component, though, is for concurrency, transportation is the only one, if something's failing and you cannot mitigate it, you can deny the land use application. That is not true with the other infrastructure. We are also required to have plans in place to say if our system, if we're not generally meeting our level of service standards, we actually have to reassess our land use decisions, is this is the decision that we're making appropriate for our transportation system, so that's actually in the plan and there's goals and policies that say we have to reassess. We have not hit that. Our system is still working at the adopted level service standards. Next slide, please. Okay, and then I just kind of wanted to go over some of the things that we do, so I've already mentioned this, the we have to do an up, an update every year for the financing plan, so we have a twenty-year list of projects, but depending on how they're being financed, they might rise to the top or something new comes up and we're getting we're able to get a grant, we have to actually update that six years, the six-year plan, so we can do the project. If a project is not in the comp plan and it's not in the six-year plan, we are not allowed to do it based on state law. So we update that every, every year. One of the components of Monroe's financing plan is we do charge impact fees for transportation. There's a one for single fam or there's one for residential and a different fee for commercial development. And that also gets updated and revised every so, every few years. And a couple of other things, which I haven't, I haven't really dug into yet, but the city of Monroe actually adopted the complete streets ordinance and that is really a multimodal approach that was adopted in two thousand eighteen. And then finally, this year, the Parks Department is working on a trails plan and so that will get integrated because that's another form of transportation, so this plan that we're working on now will have to be internally consistent with the Parks Plan as that gets updated. Next slide. Some of these aren't new anymore, but they still impact the way we need to think about transportation and that is continuing to build the electric network for the electric vehicles, the things that are, I keep hearing that are on the cusp are the buses. Community Transit is doing a pilot right now, King County Metro already has, well, Everett Transit and King County Metro already have electric buses. You need a system to support that because batteries only go so far. The other thing is the TNCs, which have been around, I've read a really interesting article about residents who are moving from the east side to communities further out such as Solton and their expectation to have Uber and Lyft and it's not as common out here, but it is a part of our, our transportation system. Microtransit, I'm really hoping that we are chosen for a pilot project for community transit within the next couple of years, where they're looking at different ways of providing public transportation in smaller vehicles and that's what microtransit is. The other thing that we actually talked about just after I started is drones. I think it was Amazon was testing a different way of delivery, and so how do, how do they impact our sidewalks, do they impact our roads? And so we need to be thinking about that and that's still an emerging technology. And then the autonomous vehicles, that's continuing to develop with Tesla, my understanding is they're also looking at trucks now and so lots of change on the horizon and we'll need to adapt for that. Next slide. You, and then this is, you saw this before with utilities and capital facilities is there's a very big push for better communication and coordination with our regional partners, so that, just putting it up there, it also helps us get grant funding, so key. I think that's the last slide, so are there any questions, this is a really high-level overview.
Does the comp plan have to take into consideration like catastrophes?
I just
Natural disasters. Well, that and things are less natural, like there's been a lot of headlines about rail derailments, train derailments in other parts of the country and just how quickly, it's not a natural disaster and it's kind of out of the control of the city and that, but it would greatly impact if there was a derailment anywhere in the general vicinity of Monroe or impacted just the rail in general that connects through here, so just things like that, is there, do we have to include that, is that going to be partly the transportation component? Would that be part of a different component of the comp plan or?
That is a really great question because it's not something that's covered, natural hazards are, we actually have to do, we do planning with Snohomish County, they are the lead, but the train, yeah, Ohio, right, is it Ohio?
They've had a couple.
That's something that we have not tackled, so I am more than happy to do some research to figure out, should we? And if we do, what do we actually have control, it might be like the response times, do we have the, does our fire district have things necessary to counter that? So, good question.
Kelsey.
So the state is kind of the, is the umbrella of making the decisions on five twenty-two, right? Correct. Have they started, like, do they already have the plan for us or so that we can go from there or are we going to have to backtrack and like give them the plan and then they're like, oh, they're them?
So I don't know if you see behind you, the finish five twenty-two is the, is the password to get so that's been a push for the city of Monroe for, for many years, I was just actually talking to Hannah before the meeting started because I seem to remember, this is like in the back of my memory, that the five twenty-two complete widening with overpasses at Paradise and Echo Falls was back in like, was part of the nickel package, do you remember that?
When they piled the dirt up there?
Yeah, yes, yeah, so you're talking, that planning to get that constructed has been in process since the late nineties, so I thought I heard the mayor give an update on that, that we had received or the five twenty-two had received funding, but it's being pushed out again, the timeline, so I know our city legislators are constantly contacting the state representatives to get the project finished.
I got a letter from the governor or someone asking for more funding for that, did you guys get that? Asking like, oh, saying that I've heard you guys, I've heard your cry for help on that, give me money for it.
Oh, interesting.
We're like at eighteen million dollars, we need like a hundred million.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I was just wondering if we're gonna make these decisions and then have to go backtrack on like, do we know on five twenty-two because that's a huge.
Yeah, it's just to find the funding. We can do, we can, we can only work, yeah, we can only work on what we, what we control, but the, the city, I mean, like I was saying, the mayor and our council members have actively been talking to our state representatives and our new state representatives to find funding.
Get to the other commissioners, Jake.
Yeah, hey, thanks for the presentation, what was the, I think it was complete streets code, it was on like the third to last slide, I think.
Yeah, I will, I'm more than happy to send you a link to it, but the complete streets, it's a concept where you're not just looking at roads, but you're also looking at transit stops, you're looking at talks, you're looking at multi-use trails and I was, when I was going through the code, it appears that we've adopted something by reference. And so I wanted to dig into it a little bit more, but I was impressed that Monroe had taken that step back in two thousand eighteen.
Awesome.
Liz.
Thank you, yeah, I would be curious on that information also and thank you again for the presentation, great presentation. On the auto LOS figure diagram picture. And the one that showed like the green, the A through C, the D, the E and the F. When was that? But like, how current is that data? So that's fairly current or?
Yeah, that, that is so the level of service standard is set by each jurisdiction, but the, the terminology isn't an industry standard, and so it's talking about the amount of delay for this, and so one thing I do want to point out is the city changed the way it did the analysis prior to the two thousand fifteen comp plan, it was based on intersections and so how much delay you had at an intersection. In two thousand fifteen, they actually changed the way that we do the analysis. It's done on an intersection and corridor basis, so
Actually, Hannah, can you pull up that slide?
Because in that slide, you'll see that, in my understanding is just, I've only had a little bit of education on why this change was made, if you can blow it up, it's the bottom right.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if this like is like from two thousand fifteen information or if this is like really current, like I was trying to figure out age of.
Sure, yeah, so
if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, this is out of the, our adopted, our current adopted two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan, this is some of the stuff that will be updated as we're with the new one, I was just trying to get, set the stage of the type of information that you'll be seeing. And again, the city did make an intentional change with this particular comp plan going just from intersections to a corridor basis and it was my understanding that we had we had at least two roads that were continue or intersections that continued to fail. But there are, our hands are kind of tied in the options to mitigate that. And so that is one thing I will be much more versed on the next time we talk about the level of service standards when we start looking at what we're going to do for two thousand twenty-four.
And I know this is kind of a complex area and I know this had come up in previous topics in past years. When it's come up in areas where we can add additional bike lanes, the Kelsey Corridor is a perfect example. The issues around being able to add bike lanes, to be able to add the connectivity, which would be amazing and we wish we could do it, but I realize there are a lot of hindrances. It's been a past issue that I think Chair Bull and I are the only two still of the current members that might remember that, maybe now Jake wasn't. I think Chair Bull and I are the only two that are still on the board or commissioned from that past discussion, but so it'll be great to be looking at that again, and then if I remember right, and this is going back from EDAB meetings, isn't there a trail that runs from Duval to Snohomish, but there's a break somewhere around Monroe and there have been talks of completing that trail to, to add to the connectivity for walking, biking all the way from, and I believe it's even farther south than Duval, all the way up through Snohomish, but sorry, shows that I'm a transplant, so I don't know the name of the trail, but I believe there were talks of, and this was pre-pandemic, trying to complete that connectivity, which sounds like it feeds into this, so. But thank you for the time, that's all I got.
Actually, two trails that have been around again. At, one comes from the city of Snohomish along US two and the other one does come up two oh three. I can't remember in there, if they're in the transportation plan, they might be in the Parks Plan, but that is part of our network, so. We do
And I think it's been a long time, and I think you're right, I think it does probably come from perks. There's been a long going back, at least quite a few years, trying to make those trails connect together. But I think we get back to city county and getting every, all the various groups, kind of like the roads, everybody talking and working together and getting it all coordinated correctly, so. It'd be a great addition if we could get it all working correctly, be a great addition for all of us. So, thank you.
Director Bailey.
I just, I just wanted to comment on a couple of the questions.
I just, I just wanted to comment on a couple of the questions. Um, one about the trails. So the, the trail connection south um, starts in Duval and goes all the way to North Bend. But it doesn't connect, it, it doesn't, there is no trail currently north of, of, of Duval. And, and then the trail, this, I think it's the Centennial Trail that runs through um, Snohomish, but I believe it stops right within the city limits of Snohomish currently. But we do have some, um, some park plans that show that trail connecting into um, into Monroe. But it's probably not anything in the near future, but I can cross our fingers. Um, the other thing about level of service, uh, Transpo has been doing updated traffic counts um, on, on streets around the city. So they, so when, as a part of this comp plan update, uh, those numbers will all be uh, correct.
Um, I just had a question for you, Kate.
Yeah.
About traffic impact fees. So Becky was here a couple meetings ago. Do they get siloed into public works?
No.
No.
They, they can't. Um, the way the law works is we have to identify a specific set of projects that are being negatively impacted by future development. You cannot use these fees for something that is already deficient. It's only for new development impacting your system. And so that list of projects is set aside. The, the big caveat is if we do not spend those funds on those projects within six years or whatever the state deems appropriate, we actually have to refund it. So that money has to be set in its own account. And I thought Becky had mentioned that um, during her presentation, is very specific.
So you have an example, there's a ninety lot development up Chain Lake. And if it was determined that they need to pay impact fees, it gets escrowed to pay future development.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. They either do an improvement or they have to pay towards an improvement.
Right.
So I found the trails. It's, it, it is, um, you were asking, Liz. There is the Centennial Trail extension that comes in along SR two from the city of Snohomish. Um, and then the one, I'm not seeing the one from the south. I do know that, again, back in the day, we were gonna use an old um, railroad crossing, which wound up being imploded. So that might have gone by the wayside. I don't remember if you remember that, but there was a rail crossing that was further north of the S two oh three um, bridge. And unfortunately, it was deemed hazardous. I see Lance Scott has more questions or comments.
I was just gonna say that the trails, the trail to the south is called the Snoqualmie Valley Trail. And it actually connects into the Iron Horse Trail, which goes out into east. I mean, it's it, um, it's, it's amazingly long, if you look that up with, with its connections. But, but alas, does not connect to, to Monroe, which as I understand, one of the issues has been uh, acquiring right of way between Monroe and um, and Duval.
Okay.
Excellent question.
Ready to move on, Kate, to?
Yes.
Item six point two, which is initial twenty forty-four housing allocation methodology options.
Okay, so the, I had, because of a timing situation, I had skipped over the Planning Commission and the Housing Human Services Board and went straight to council. And of course, what happened? The time got pushed out. So I wanted to let you know what was going on, because this will have an impact on our housing element. One of the items um, that we're required to do is um, figure out the number of total new housing units. And our allocation comes from Snohomish County. Snohomish County, countywide planning, planning policies for well, at least last twenty years, has had its house, housing policy HO five. And that talks about the coordination between the county and all of the cities. Then the state legislature in twenty twenty-one passed House Bill twelve twenty, and they are making, they're changing the language, so they're really trying to actually see development of affordable housing. And I'm, I think affordable is the wrong word. I love Anita uses attainable, because we're not talking about just low income. We're talking about the whole gamut of affordable housing from those who can basically rent to people who can afford million dollar homes. And so in your packet, the agenda bill basically walks you through the information that I had taken to city council. And um, the state said, depart, Washington State Department of Commerce, you have to come up with the possible methods that each county is gonna have to come up with their numbers. And then you're gonna have to come up with methods for the county to then figure out how to divvy up the necessary um, housing units. And so the state came up with options A and B. Option A was basically, it was a um, an equitable distribution of housing units based on um, the last round of updates. But it was assuming that that new, that those housing allocations were only going to be accommodated with new growth. Which seems kind of crazy, because the numbers that they have for Monroe, the lower income is over fifty percent of the housing total stock that we're being assigned. And so the second option, and it did not take in account any of your existing affordable housing, in which Monroe has. And so alternative B, they called the fair share. The component with that, though, is that there are some cities that have absolutely no housing in some of the lower categories, and some cities that have an excess. And the way that model worked is you would get a negative, you would get a negative number, which is kind of crazy, because Monroe is not gonna go demo any houses. Um, and so alternative C was using the agreed to uh, allocation that seemed fair, but now giving credit to each jurisdiction that has already got housing in each of these categories. And so on, um, page eleven. Yeah, um, I tried to show what that meant for us in a graphic form. I'm gonna go through some visuals for you to, to really help illustrate better. The piece that I also wanted to provide to the council is just below that. And that's showing you what, what does that mean in actual numbers of somebody's salary? And then breaking it down, if affordable housing is considered thirty percent, you're not spending more than thirty percent of your income, what can you actually afford for rent or a mortgage? And so I broke that down. And then um, Jay was kind enough to send me one potential calculator to come up with, what does the housing cost? And then Chris Collier, who presented to you at your last meeting, or two meetings ago, he gave me another example. And so on page twelve, it shows you the maximum amount you could afford uh, by the two options that I tried to do these calculations and the availability of the houses. So uh, for example, if you are making thirty percent of the um, average median income, you can only afford a house, by example, A of forty-five thousand dollars, or the one that Chris had done, seventy-four thousand. And then he was kind enough to go through the sales records. Monroe had twenty of these houses, but we haven't seen one since twenty fourteen. And so it's just really bringing to light this challenge that we have about creating houses that are attainable by multiple income levels. So one of the questions that um, one of our council members asked is, well, can you show me where we are when it comes to the housing for each category? And so up on the screen, I've, I ran through and did just this based on percentage. So it was equitable when you're looking at each jurisdiction instead of their total number, because we all have different populations, landmass. And so for Monroe, we actually provide subsidized housing. And that's what that first graphic shows. It's, you're making thirty percent of the average median income, but it's subsidized. And uh, Monroe is the purple, purple bar. And before we go on, I just wanna um, remind everybody, the way I have this broken out is the different geographies that are in Vision twenty fifty. The first is called Metro City, and for Snohomish County, that's the city of Everett. And then the next category is core cities. It's the Snohomish half or portion of Bothell and the city of Linwood. The next category is the high capacity transit communities, and that's each city that either has a light rail station in it or planned, or a bus rapid transit. That could either be Sound Transit Stride or Community Transit Swift. The next category we are included in, that's cities and counties, and that are cities and towns. And then the last category is unincorporated Snohomish County. And this is important, because based on Vision twenty fifty, those high capacity transit communities, they're expected to take almost fifty percent of all of the future housing that we are all supposed to accommodate in Snohomish County by twenty twenty-four, or twenty forty-four. For the category that we're in, we're only supposed to be accommodating seven and a half percent of all of the county's housing needs. And then when you drill down deeper, the city of Monroe is only being asked to provide one point two, three percent of the total housing needed for Snohomish County through twenty forty-four. So I just wanted to kind of give you context, where all that investment is occurring in the I five and four oh five, they're being expected to take a lot more of the population housing and jobs. Okay, so next slide. And this category, so this is, you're making thirty percent of the average median income, but you're not subsidized. So these are houses based on my really, hopefully, uh, estimated calculations. So that's gonna be a house that costs no more than a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and your rent could not exceed uh, what was it? Your monthly housing cost couldn't exceed fourteen hundred dollars, basically. Next. And next category is, this is the thirty to fifty percent. Again, we have smaller percentage of our housing. Uh, next. We do have a lot, though, in the fifty to eighty percent. And for that category, you can afford on a monthly basis up to twenty-eight hundred dollars for your housing cost. And that would not exceed thirty percent of your income. Next slide. Thank you. Uh, now at eighty to a hundred percent, again, this is pretty much the largest category for the city of Monroe. Next. And then this one is entertaining to me, I guess, a little bit. Briar and Woodway, look at their numbers. If you know these communities, it makes sense. This is where expensive housing is in the county. And then finally, a hundred and twenty, it's the next one and above. And again, uh, next slide, Hannah, thank you. You can't see it, we're, I don't know, a little bit above midway, but it's the same communities that have the affluent housing, they're, they're spiking in this one. Next slide. And this is just a pie chart for our community. Um, really, our largest category, again, is the fifty to eighty, eighty to a hundred percent, uh, average average median income. And this is important, because when I get into the next slides, it shows you how this works out with the um, option A, option B, and option C. So next slide, please. So again, it's kind of hard to read, but for Monroe, we, um, um, you know what? I'm gonna send you the actual numbers, so you can read this. The slide's really hard to read. At the end of the day, looking at the analysis, I had recommended to the city council that we go with the hybrid. It makes the most sense. It seems like it's equitable across the county. We're getting credit for the housing that we're providing. And so, actually, can you go to the next slide? You use your cursor to get to show where Monroe is down a little bit for you, up a little bit. So you'll see in this one, we, it's showing that we had higher numbers of housing in the um, fifty to eighty and eighty to a hundred percent on those earlier graphs, where you're seeing a higher percentage for us. So that was B, but there were some communities that we were, for this one, it was, we wouldn't have to build. We should be demoing. Again, doesn't make any sense. We're gonna keep our housings. And then finally, the final, um, actually go one more slide, please. So this is a synopsis of all the options specifically from Monroe, which also tells the tale of why the hybrid option made the uh, most sense. And the city council did agree with that. And so Lance or I will be taking this to the Snohomish County tomorrow Planning Advisory Committee in April. And then that, the Planning Advisory Committee, they make a recommendation, or they'll, they'll have a conversation, hopefully come up with a consensus. They'll forward their conduct, um, recommendation to Snohomish County tomorrow's steering committee, which I believe council member Fulcher is our representative. And ultimately, that goes to Snohomish County Council, who makes the ultimate decision. And then that gets added into the countywide planning policies. And that says, city of Monroe, you now have this allocation that you need to be planning for. So I thought it was really important just to bring this to you and try to give you some of the background information. Complicated, but questions?
But I think the hybrid um, choice is the better one too.
All right.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, we have one more item of new business. This is our, is this our monthly report that we get the second meeting of the month?
It is, but you didn't have a second meeting in February.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the January twenty twenty-three Community Development Department Monthly Report. We will start on the first page up here. We had two pre-application meetings held in January. Um, one for a campground proposal over by the fairgrounds. And another was for IHOP over.
So the campground proposal?
Yes.
Does the local surveying business own that property, or they're just submitting the pre-application?
I don't think.
Yeah. So Harmsen Associates does not own the property.
They're just submitting.
Yeah, they are, they submitted the application on behalf of the property owner. You're probably aware, there's a lot of critical areas on that site. And so whatever project they come up with, um, they're probably still gonna have to go through a reasonable use exception, and it will have to go to the hearing examiner for a decision. Yeah.
And then we had IHOP at the Denny's Building. Okay, uh, then our project highlight was the launch of our twenty forty-four comprehensive plan website. It's um, www-monroe2044.com. Our consultants have been very hard at work on this bad boy. Um, it's a great one-stop shop for everything that you need with the comprehensive plan. I know that, were you, were they showing this at the council meeting or just the documents?
I can't remember, was it live? Yeah, she did a live demonstration.
So you guys are familiar with that, then. Um, otherwise, we had uh, forty-eight new business licenses, a hundred and twenty-eight renewals. Under projects. I think the only thing that's new on here is the Summer Lane Site Plan Review at two two six Madison Street. It's a proposal for five new residential units. Yeah, I think that's about it.
I do want to add just one comment on the um, the conference plan website. I am getting, so there's an option for you to, for anybody who's interested in participating. I am getting all those emails, and I've started um, an Excel spreadsheet for all parties that are sending in an email address and so that, it's working. It's working.
Jake's got his hand up.
Hey, Jake.
Yeah, sorry, I was just looking at the South Anne Street with commercial on the bottom and six units. Yeah, sorry. I was just looking at the South Anne Street with commercial on the bottom and six units.
Oh.
Or sixteen apartments above. That is crazy. Is that, how how close to being completely approved is that?
So that was actually a really interesting project. They're doing a a boundary line adjustment to aggregate the two lots into one. There are two houses that um, the Historic Society has been trying to figure out a way to move the houses. They're they're mirror images of each other. And so the property owner, Mr. Popeye, he's been trying to delay the process as long as possible because as soon as the boundary line adjustment is approved, which it can't be approved until one, at least one of the houses is removed because the way the code is written, you can only have one residential unit. Um, so the BLA basically is ready to go. The site plan uh, decision is actually on my desk for review. So they're getting really close for the approval uh, component of it.
I'm looking at it on uh, Google Street View right now. That is so they're the exact same.
Yeah, right? Isn't that neat?
Those from the same series?
Like the documents for like the projects that you see in the monthly reports, everything is available on our website, like all of the submittal plans.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, just under Community Development Planning Projects.
Awesome. Thank you.
But council member Kenny was trying to find a home for those two historic homes too.
She is. And Lance, I don't know. Have you have you heard any updates? Have they found a home for those houses or?
I, the last I heard is there was the potential, there was a potential location to move one of them. But that that was probably three weeks ago that I heard that. I haven't heard any other update. So um, they, the Historic Society has really been working hard to try to to find a location to get those moved and and the property owner has been um, very receptive to working with them, but there is a limit to the timing in terms of how long they can hold off. And and um, for those who were interested, those that they're referred to as the Buck Houses. Um, and yeah, they're two mirror images of each other. So one of them is in better is is in better condition than the other. So I think that they've realistically have just considered that one of them is probably viable for to move. So if you have a piece of property and you're looking for a house, it's not, they'll, the house is free, but there's obviously cost to moving and and other site development, but it's it's um, we'll see. I I, as Kate said, I think this project is coming, is coming close to the uh, permitting stage. So unless they can get get something set up for those for those um, for that house, it it unfortunately might get demoed.
I'm guessing Nichols Brothers has have already given a bid, so everybody knows.
Oh, yeah.
Asked to put them on the big truck.
Oh. I think I think Councilmember Kenny had mentioned that during the, one of the previous council meetings.
Anything else for us, Hannah?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Lots of great information this evening.
If there's, if there's anything that um, that the commission would like to see in the monthly reports, then let us know. Um, you know, we 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 try to put new things in there and make it interesting, but if there's something that of particular interest that that you might like to see, um, don't don't hesitate to send us a suggestion and we can see if we can incorporate it in.
Thanks, Lance. Yeah, mostly it's always gonna be something about restaurants because buddy, you know, like, everybody ask you, well, I've heard Wendy's is going in. Planning Commission know about Wendy's and going.
Well, the 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 year, apparently the Euro Stop opened this weekend. And the Wing Stop, who are, they were not related, um, are looking to open, I think the thirtieth. I'm not sure what their date is. They got pushed back a little bit, so.
Item seven, we have old business, your schedule?
So I I just wanted to bring this. Uh, my understanding is you had a good conversation at your last meeting. And so the only thing that has not happened at this point is a vote, which sounds like needs to occur. We're still kind of waiting for direction on what the Planning Commission um, entails. I believe Lance already gave an update on it will be challenging. The um, the third Monday, wait, no, I'm getting this wrong. The first, yeah, the third Monday, the federal government has identified for the federal holidays. There's four of them, and then there's one on the first Monday of the month. So you would have to cancel those meetings. Tuesday is not an option because that city council, we have been told Wednesday is not to host because it conflicts with school district and religious activities. Thursday is the Parks Board and the Community Human Services, which leaves Friday. So did I miss anything, Lance?
Uh, no. And and I and and I did, I did have a conversation with the with the mayor and the in in the city administrator, um, who really I I think pointed out some of just some of the things that we that had already come up. Uh, one being that we have, when we reach out for applications and we provide and we do the interviews, we provide information of the expectations of when those meetings are going to be. Um, one, one other piece that we didn't talk about is I you know, City Hall is gonna be closed for for two years while we do this, the the remodel. And so we've been looking for space to uh, to hold our meetings. And it looks like we may be able to, they're gonna move the court, the court operations over to a temporary location in the Public Works Building. So it it would still be on the City Hall campus, but that's um, I I just, I bring that up in terms of that we're gonna have some shuffling around in terms of just location and if we're changing dates of the meetings as well. I I just ju- just so everyone is aware that that's also um, a a variable at this point.
So we're just looking for final guidance from the Planning Commission and it sounded like a vote had not been taken, so we're encouraging.
So what we do need to discuss and and vote on something like this. So the primary driver was that a couple current Planning Commission members.
The school district.
Right. But the school district meetings are at five.
Yeah, the the initial driver was because um, up until basically the start of this year, school board meetings had been um, starting at six o'clock. Now, I know that there may be some future discussions there and whether they're going to maintain that five o'clock time. Right now, it's through, I think, the rest of twenty twenty three um, in the past. So there will, there will be discussion on that end at least, but we obviously, we don't control that piece. Right now, it doesn't overlap as much, which is kind of nice, just for those who want to be involved. But yes, the motivating factor for bringing the discussion for consideration was just looking at, you know, when we applied, we were also tasked with looking at everything from an equity lens. And so looking at access to all of our open government in our different meetings and having that when it was six PM and then this was seven PM, the overlap was there like ninety nine percent of the time. And so just to, so that was kind of the driving factor of just looking at access and overlapping of big meetings within the community. And so I don't, I don't know if there isn't a vote. I'm assuming it just doesn't happen. So I didn't know if we needed.
Oh.
I mean, if formally we need a vote, then that's fine. I think we discussed it um, as much as Planning Commission. My understanding was we discussed as much as needed and we didn't need to move forward with anything else. It wasn't going to be a potential actionable item. That was my understanding, at least from the last discussion.
Okay, my my misunderstanding, I missed the meeting, so I'm doing my best to figure out what we needed to do. So if the if the decision was made during discussion, a vote is not needed. We just staff needed to know, do we have to continue trying to figure this out or not?
Okay.
So it sounds like the answer is no.
Yeah.
At least now.
You know, we are appointed members, so it's not all the time that planning commissioners will also be interested in
Right.
The attending the school board meeting. Although, you know, obviously our public schools are important and
Yeah.
you know. But.
I don't have a big conflict right now. Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, it was, like I said, it was, I think the discussion, it mostly happened. Yeah, I think the but the motivator was access, not only for people. And it wasn't, it wasn't a personal thing. It was just looking at and yes, I have a front door look because I'm involved in both, but I committed to Planning Commission, knowing that the dates and the times were the time they are, and I committed to it. And so I stand by that commitment. Just being one of the people who does go back and forth. And I'm like, I can do it. But that access, it is limited when people are trying to be involved in both places at 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 both times, and it potentially limits involvement of if somebody wants to be more involved with the city, then they they can't necessarily go and be on, you know, go run for school board and vice versa. If they want to be more heavily involved in school board, they have to consider, well, can I commit to Planning Commission? That would be cool, but here's this conflict of the meeting. And with it all being just a focus on collaboration in the city. So I just wanted the discussion to happen. That's kind of why I brought it to the attention. We had it and maybe it comes up down the road at some point, but at least right now I don't.
Much. Okay, great. Well, thank you. Easily done. Discussion.
Okay. Anyone like to move for adjournment? Oh, actually, discussion. So we'll start on that end with, we, that was different than.
Yeah, I just needed guidance. We're good. Okay, I actually don't have anything to add, surprise. I usually do and I do not tonight, so we're good. Thank you. Thank you for the presentations. I will say that. All the information, we're gearing up for a real big process here and it's gonna be a lengthy process and it's important work and all the information leading up to it is valuable and stuff to sit on for the next couple of years as we work on this. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you too, and I'm glad it's getting uh, like later. Yay.
Liz?
Um, I don't have too much, and I guess this is kind of a question for Lance and um, the other cities, yeah, because in some of our discussions we've had in the past, it's been brought up about um, you know, the ability to be uh, be able to add parks into certain areas of town and then also um, and since we're going into the big comprehensive plan um, updates anyways, um, kind of some questions on the various zones as we have them, and I always call them the wrong thing. Um, but like the industrial park and uh, tourism and I always called, I always called the tourism one the wrong area, the one around the fairgrounds and stuff like that. And because of the impact with the airport. Well, are we potentially going to be relooking at some of that, which I don't wanna I know there was a lot of heavy lifting by the past commissioners in twenty fifteen with the comprehensive plan update and a lot of work went into that. So I not saying that we need to completely rework that. I'm just bringing it up because I know current commissioners have brought up questions on that in the, in over the last six, nine months. So I just wanna rebring those topics up as we're starting to go into this comprehensive plan um, updates um, and make sure we're addressing these issues since this is a good time to be addressing these topics. Um, I just don't want these topics getting forgotten while while we're all thinking about them as we're hitting all these points. So and thanks for the great uh, presentations tonight and thanks for everybody's time.
So I see Lance's unmuted um, mind.
And I can elaborate where it needs to be. I just, since Commissioner Blair isn't here, because in um, a couple, and Janelle's not here. And I know um, others have brought up the parks and I just, I want to make sure that everybody knows that we are hearing everybody and that we're we're addressing everybody. So I just want to make sure.
Well, obviously, a lot, a lot of that will be driven by the pros plan, which is the most uh, recent uh, park planning effort. Uh, but having said that, as we go through, as we, as we go through the um, the comp, the comprehensive plan, the land use element of the comp plan, there is an opportunity to look at if if there are zones that currently do not allow for the designation of parks, if that would be an obstacle, that would be an opportunity for us to to look at those, at those zones and include that as a potential, as a potential use. Um, so if there was ever a desire to to designate a park in an area that seemed logical, um, we wouldn't have, we we wouldn't, the zoning code wouldn't get get in our way. So I mean, that's that that's probably the the main effort that would go, that would go into it in terms of the looking at the land use element.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
That's a good.
That way and in an attempt to help to make sure every, we make sure everybody's voices are heard of our, and all of our commissioners are fairly represented and so we can make sure the process goes as well as it can. And so everything is smooth and gets everybody's goals accomplished that we all want. So thank you.
I do want to, um, since you mentioned the tourist commercial zone, I do want to give you an update. I believe we let you know that the city council uh, reverted the code, so it does have the government uses. So it, it is like it used to be. Um, the interim code went away, but there is still an appeal that is in process and that was uh, a director's interpretation that outdoor storage is not permitted in that zone, having in it's specific to um, a proposal by the PUD. And so that is still going through its process. It, um, all parties have submitted legal briefs to the hearing examiner. I think there might be one more round, but we should know soon on what the hearing examiner determines um, regarding that interpretation. So and that is separate from reassessing the tourist commercial zone. My understanding, unless Lance has heard differently, is that it is what it is and we keep moving forward.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to comment, Lance. I just wanted to make sure that your discussion regarding loud uses uh, related to parks was theoretical. So we're because, you know, parks would be allowed in residential and commercial areas, potentially not industrial areas, right?
Yes, yes, theoretical.
Thank you.
Conceptual and theoretical.
Awesome. Jake?
Got nothing. Thank you for the presentation, Kate.
All right. Thank you very much. Good to have you here, Kate.
Thank you. I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing more for discussion? Lance, anything else to add?
No, nothing to add. I was muted.
I don't have anything besides the first day of spring is literally a week away. So we're so close. So happy early spring, everyone.
I, well, I guess that will be reflected in the minutes then, the excitement towards spring.
I do, actually, I'm sorry, I'm gonna seal this. I want to give a huge shout out to Hannah. You do, you all have not heard the drama that's been happening at City Hall. We have lost permit techs. And so Ms. Hannah stepped up to the plate. She is our, she was our only permit tech for was that a month? Yeah, she was doing three jobs. We have a, one permit tech is already on board and Hannah has been helping train her with Leanne. And our next permit tech will be starting uh, on the sixteenth, so soon. But um, she just has been taking care of the planning issues, the building department, building permits, and I just want to make sure she is recognized for doing an amazing job.
Way to go, Hannah.
You rock, Hannah.
Yeah. What about you?
I don't have anything to add.
No. I thought we were talking ADUs, no?
Oh, yeah, we were talking about ADUs, so that won't be coming up, because, um, the state is very focused on accessory dwellings, true?
Correct, and, um, Lance actually can give you, he's, on Fridays, he sits in on a, I don't know, what, whatever's going on at the state down in Olympia. Um, Jay and I were talking about the accessory dwelling units and hoping you can give us an update on where that stands right now.
Yeah, so the, the, that Friday meeting, the, the city has, has hired, um, a lobbyist team to, um, work on our behalf. They, a- as well as other cities, um, when it comes to the legislature, mostly just keeping us in tune for what, what's coming up, where things seem to be going, and, and, uh, where our comments might be best, um, best applied. But there is a, there is a bill that's been going through the legislature to look at making modifications to the to ADU codes at the state level, some of the things that it would, if, if it were to pass, as it, as it, as in the form that currently stands is, um, ADUs would, there would be an allowance for up to two ADUs on each, on each property, as well as, uh, a prohibition on the, what, what are referred to as the residency requirements. Uh, so for example, in, in this, in many codes, including Monroe, uh, there's the, the, the owner has to live in either the ADU or the primary residence, and then they can rent the other one out. Um, that would go away, and they could both be rentals. There's also some, it's suggestions, uh, for how much parking, uh, a city could require for, for an ADU. So if, if the legislation were to pass, we would have to make some modifications to our, to our ADU code. And so, um, is, if that continues on, we'll put together a, a white paper or information sheet. Um, and we would, I don't know what the implementation date, uh, on that would be if it were to pass, but we would get started on our, on our code amendment, so that we would be in compliance with that. So I will, I'll, I'll let you know at our next meeting where all that's going, if anywhere.
Okay, Lance, could you tell me as a planner, how, how concerned are, would you be about this? Um, kind of clause, says, uh, requiring an amnesty program for owners with unpermitted ADUs to obtain permits, which means they're gonna build it and ask for forgiveness later.
Yeah, there's, those it's kind of a field, I, I don't know, that, that's maybe not giving it the weight it deserves. Um, it, what it, it doesn't, it doesn't exempt someone from basic life safety uh, um, code, code compliance, but it would, the, the amnesty programs will typically, if you come forward, then, then you are, you're not gonna have code enforcement, you're not gonna get potential fines, stop work orders, um, red tags, so that you can't occupy, in, in extreme cases, you might. But it, it doesn't just, it's not, it's not a blanket exemption, so if somebody were to, to build an ADU and it was occupied and it never had any permits, and um, and then it was inspected and it didn't meet the code, the, there's, the property owner would have to go through the process to meet minimum life, um, life safety standard. So it's, um, it's really, it's an incentive to, to get away from um, fines and, and escalating code enforcement that somebody might, might be in. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Melanie, did you have additional comments?
I was queuing up to make a motion, if everybody's comments are done. I was just getting in line. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second? Thanks, Kelsey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. We're not gonna call you a rock star, Hannah, cuz of that commercial.